The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The leaves are green. The flowers bloom. The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh.
We more, uh, we did more than I thought. But having said that, um, we're pretty much going through the threes now. We might have maybe, uh, finish that up as best we can. There, there are gonna be a couple of things. The, the rent downstairs, still, we do not know what that's gonna be. But we should know, this very, we better know by the end of the month. And, uh, there's, uh, some, some situations with salaries that we have to discuss, I think, a little bit further. But having said that, uh, when we're looking at it now, I'm on page two. Page one seems to be complete. You, you guys agree to that?
Yeah, o- other than the, the rental.
Yeah, the rental.
Right. And then the second page is...
Yeah, I think that's pretty well taken care of as well, if it looks like, mm.
The DCNR grant on that item, uh, three fifty four oh seven one.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, we were waiting on that. What's the, you know, I think the, the key was is that we weren't sure if some of it was gonna get done, right?
Just, uh, uh, some this year, and so the twenty twenty one budget would, uh... I think any of the, there's only, uh, we're restricted, uh, into what we can get done. And we, we spent money already. We spent about five, six thousand dollars for, uh, clearing, uh, a right of way in a, in a line of sight for an HOP. And we submitted that, Lynn, and we were told no.
Right, that was the tree removal?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we can't get that back.
So, have you submitted any, do you intend to, do you think we'll be asking you to submit anything else by the, by the end of the year?
Well, we haven't done anything. I don't see, you're saying there's nothing that's gonna happen in the remainder of this year?
I don't think so, Robert.
Well, I, I don't think so, but I think, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll submit, uh, to continue the HOP. But other than that, I don't think that's gonna work.
So for twenty twenty one...
Unless we convince Joe Lozio to burn the house down.
Well, he, uh...
It would be convenient.
He could do it.
Um, so five thousand was submitted, not reimbursed. So it looks like that hundred and forty one, six hundred might be pushed into twenty twenty one entirely, is that what you said?
I, I think so.
Okay, okay.
So we'll take that over?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Uh, yeah. All right, so I think that takes care of that second page of the... And, uh, I'm looking now at the fund balance forward, we'll come back to that.
Okay, so the, um, I'm sorry, the offsetting expense for that is three fifty four dot three hundred?
Oh, and it's three fifty four.
Uh, four fifty four.
I was gonna say, yeah, four fifty four. You wanna go there right now?
Yeah, let's fill that up.
Well, it's, uh...
I'm a mountain, yeah.
It's the, it's the one.
And that five thousand that's in there from the beginning of each year, we're gonna have to, um, we'll have to figure out where to put that. It's just not gonna be covered by the...
That's a good point.
Okay. All right, and now we're back up to the three.
We're done. Pretty good shape with threes. Maybe, uh, we will have a figured fund balance forward, it won't finish everything up.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So the fours, and, uh, I could not, they just go on and on and on. Uh, so, here we go.
You had mentioned something about the salaries. Um, which ones do you want to address, because maybe we could spot them and...
Well, salaries of the elected officials, I don't know that we're ready yet for that. I think that's gonna be a situation where three of us have to sit down and decide.
Is that gonna change?
Uh, well, we have in there right now forty seven?
Yeah, forty seven, how about?
I think, uh, here we go again, but, and last year it was, we, we factored in a name increase, so a little bit more than...
The budget of forty five, one fifty.
Last year.
For, for twenty twenty. That was the budgeted amount? Right.
Now, let's see what...
And that thirty three thousand five ninety seven, since we added last quarter, you'd be up to close to the forty four, forty five.
Right, so forty seven is more than, uh, I don't think it even has to be forty seven, to tell you the truth, but it, it, it doesn't hurt to plug it in. Jacob?
Oh, yeah, certainly, 'cause it, it won't, it won't go up, so...
From there.
So, um, you know, have that there, and if you need whatever the difference between that and forty five, one fifty is, you know, take it from, from there.
I just wasn't sure if there were other things that you identified this week that we put in from last week. There were some that we just did not hit, and I think I highlighted those, um, like the, uh, four fifty four dot one one five. We didn't even address it last time, so what I did is, you know, we just picked up the budget in the, um, two thousand and twenty spent for, looks like the annualization isn't even close to that, so that's a conservative figure.
Right, well, the, the gunman happened to, uh, he, he had a, he, he couldn't work, he, he was unemployed for, for, fortunately that.
Okay, so you think they pride your budget amount as a good estimate?
I would, I would think so.
Okay. Uh, I think that's the only budget, was that the only salary that we had there? Yeah, I think so. So then what we did is we took the percentage of, we added up all the salaries and, and multiplied to the Social Security and Medicare by their percentage. Uh, unemployment, we took basically what the average was, and with a little bit of bump up, because that's, you're only taxable on that to the extent you go up to two thousand five hundred. So, you know, that's not gonna change dramatically, even as wages go up. You know, where those tax numbers are coming from. But we've seen that the other salaries are in line for now. I mean, oh, they may be tweaked as we go down through the fall, for today's purposes, what do you think?
We'll line item it down again.
I'm just looking at any of the salaries. Um, let me just, let me print that up. We did a worksheet. You know what, another way to look at this, there's a second tab on, oh, we didn't print that out, huh? No, we did a second tab on the worksheet itself, do you have it here? You know what I sent you yesterday, there's a general tab, and then there's a federal taxes? And that's where we kind of dropped in almost the, uh, wages.
Did that turn out, it was on your message? Didn't turn?
You didn't see that one, right? No, I didn't. That's in one area to kind of look at it, 'cause this is the same numbers we put into the budget itself. Okay, just continue down the line, and then we come to a salary item, we can't address it. All right.
Okay, so...
And then, um, we're back on page three then?
Page C, and we're starting down with, uh, elected officials type in, we have to refill that in. Uh, I guess the Sweetwater Dam reimbursement expense, we're partnered with the, uh, Twin Lakes, uh, Association, and that's an obligation that we have. I think, right now, we, we did pay so far six hundred and fifty one dollars, budget a thousand, I think a budget of, a thousand wouldn't be more than enough. Unless the dam breaks, and then it would be a million.
That's the word, Jeff, skirmish.
Oh, right there, huh?
Yeah, and for some reason, uh, that I, uh, would like to contest...
That Mount Tom Road, that one, that little one?
Yeah. And for some reason, the, there was an implication that, that was agreed upon, that we have, uh, responsibility. There were three of us, but the nursing home went out of business, so it's the two of us.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and I don't know why we're even involved with it. I don't think it's anything of our responsibility, but that's another day. Uh, general government expenses, other, there we go, Lynn. Got that.
Yeah, and, um, like I said on that one, 'cause I, everybody got a printed out sheet on that.
Four hundred, three ten.
The two biggest expenses on that this year, that there was no account number for them, with the settlement for FMCB Bank, Ivy Ridge. And, uh, to cover the loan payments for one year, um, I transferred the twenty six thousand six forty eight eighty eight into our general fund, 'cause that's an automatic loan payment, starting November first, for the Marcus Wall House. So that got put in there. I probably should have, um, a separate line item created.
We should create a line item.
When we were talking last week, we took those two in consideration, took it out, and that's where we're going to put the twenty thousand for next year.
Right.
And the twenty six thousand, I did put it in down below, I created a line item for the debt payment for, um, the house. The house loan, which, uh...
What number, Holly?
Yeah, I created a number here, um... Yeah, there we go. I put two, four seventy two dot one oh two. One two for house, and I put twenty six five, but you're right, it's probably twenty six seven, what would be quicker?
Um, the, um, I don't remember the monthly payment, but if you divide that, um, like, oh...
Yeah, sorry, I had twenty six five, I don't know, 'cause I, I didn't have the ten...
I'm sorry, what was the number again?
Uh, the account number that I put in on the sheet that I sent you was four seventy two dot one oh two, and it would be a new account.
Oh, so it's not on the sheet you sent yesterday?
Down by debt payment, um, the year bond, and, um, loan payment. If you look at four seventy two dot one oh two, or...
We don't have, we don't have that on, on...
It doesn't necessarily, it could, sometimes they're not, uh, sequential.
Well, no, it, I mean, it should, but I'm, I'm thinking the last number we got for four seventy two is one oh one, loan interest truck. We don't have anything else.
Loan interest truck is, uh, one oh one, right?
Yeah, but Holly's saying she created an account, four seventy two one oh two.
And as you know, and as we've...
Yeah, you know what, I don't know what happened, but that twenty six five now, everything got pushed down.
Okay, so...
Did you, did, did you just take the worksheet I had, or did you copy it anywhere?
No, Julia just printed it out.
That's odd, because that twenty six five now is in the Social Security area, it looks like everyone got bumped down now.
Okay, so, so again, you have, um, the four seventy two one oh two...
Right.
With, uh, um, the number that's down in the Social Security line, where it says twenty six five hundred?
Right, which should actually probably be twenty six seven. Look at the number that you, that you had in the, um, that you transferred over.
Right, I was like twenty six six forty eight.
Yeah, we can round it to twenty six seven, twenty six seven thousand seven hundred.
Okay, so it's gonna be account four seventy two one oh two, and it'll be twenty six thousand seven hundred.
And it looks like, let me just double check above here. Looks like that's the only part they got, um, didn't get transferred over. So I'm wondering, would you like to print out the last two pages of this, um, spreadsheet that we have? Sharon, if you wanna take your script and use...
Actually, I just, uh, it should be a ready thing, um...
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to pull in the copier now.
Yeah, the, the... Just grab it and check it, and then I could scan off my X card. Sorry about that, I have no idea what's coming. The version I'm looking at that I printed off, is a plastic, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Excel can be fun when you, when you print it.
I'd say so. So, okay, four seventy two one oh two.
So it's not just being illegal, though, is that working, is that everything? Four seventy two one oh two is on it, loan payment's on the house. And then that one's at twenty six thousand five hundred, added from the transfer included in general.
And then let me see, then I can just look at here. We're gonna make that twenty six two now, but these now, yeah, changed a bit. Um, were there any changes to the salaries themselves?
We didn't change any number, or, I don't know.
You know what, Julia, um, you're...
I have a separate dedicated sheet that I'm making.
Okay, okay. It's a minor, it's a minor difference?
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, read one down, Julia, only because we're all working off of the others' time.
Well, the problem is, is that everything now is pushed down a notch on the ones that everybody holds. So if you wanna look at those, um, the four seventy two one oh two, for the house, it's gonna be twenty six seven hundred?
Right.
And then the, um, Social Security, that's what changed. Social Security should be thirty seven nine forty four?
Uh, and, uh, yeah, we are, we plugged in twenty six five. It was thirty nine eight.
Or, um, the Social Security and the Medicare are going to be rounded thirty eight thousand, and then Medicare will be eighty nine hundred, working numbers. The unemployment comp of forty one dot three hundred is gonna be forty five hundred. Okay, and then everything else, we can work off of what looks like, and that's done?
Uh, I, I guess it does, but can I just go over it again real quickly? Social Security, now Social Security, uh, would be thirty what?
Thirty eight thousand.
It's plugged in here at twenty six five.
That's because everything got shifted down, when that twenty six five was originally for the loan, but it should be twenty six seven. We're gonna have twenty six seven for the loan, and then the Social Security will use thirty eight thousand.
Eight.
Eighty nine hundred?
And then that unemployment comp...
Oh, because that got pushed down too, right?
Yeah, and the unemployment comp should be forty five hundred, it's not seventy seven.
Unemployment comp?
Right.
Would be how much?
Forty five hundred.
Right.
Four thousand five hundred.
As opposed to, we, or, again, it's pushed down?
Yep.
Pension benefits.
So unfortunately, this brought, we came down here because of the discussion around the general, um, the, the local general expenses. So we go back there? Nothing, we didn't do anything yet there?
Okay.
Kind of stopped at the unemployment comp.
Ah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't make something.
I think, uh, we could, we could figure this out, though, Lynn. Uh, we know who, uh, we know the, how much and who gets, right? That is, it's not going to change in twenty twenty one, because the allowance has, has not been, even if it was introduced, it'd be, introduced in twenty twenty one, most likely apply to twenty twenty two. So I think it's gonna be the same. Uh, do you know how much it is per person?
I think it's thirty five hundred a person.
Thirty five, and we have...
Um...
I don't know, I just, the five crew.
Are you down to pension level?
Not where I saw it, yes, four eighty three.
States in that area, um...
Thirty five is allowed by the state, so...
How many, like thirty five hundred, how many?
Yeah, I've counted in my head, hold on.
Oh, we have the road crew, Eddie, and... I guess we have to include Terry, right? Julia.
Thirty one thousand five hundred. Okay. Wherever you wanna go from here, doesn't matter.
Well, let's, wanna finish this, we gotta, we could go right up to the top and just say that, uh...
Uh, we, as of the last budget session, we stepped off at, uh, the law township code there, which is four oh four point three ten. So if you wanted to start at three fourteen?
Right.
Four oh, yeah, four, yeah. All right, we jumped ahead.
And Sharon, that was the one I had asked you to click on before. It was just one lawyer that was the Ivy Ridge that we paid in twenty twenty? So that's if, if something unusual happens, that we have to hire an outside solicitor? And in this case, for this year, it was, um, the Ivy Ridge situation?
The...
That was with, um, uh, FMCB.
Right, FMCB, and, and, uh...
So what was the lawyer's name?
Well, we had Ron.
Oh, this isn't Ron, this is an outside solicitor.
I don't know, who is that?
Oh, wasn't that, uh, we had the PR portion of the ADR fee for the, the judge?
Right.
So there was two thousand that was budgeted, and two thousand, uh, you wanted to leave it same?
Probably the same as mine, Holly.
Makes sense.
Uh, special attorney labor relations, that's going to be, uh, Tom Heimbeck.
And as you and I discussed, it's gonna be increased extensively. Uh, you didn't see very much expense there, but we're in the negoti- labor negotiations now. So most of it will be, uh, November, December.
And I think, um, in this year.
A little bit of January, of this year, right?
Yeah, but for twenty twenty one...
That's what we have to think about.
That's what we're looking at, so... Yeah, that's happening in November, December of this year.
It'll be, it'll be twenty twenty one combined, yep. It'll be this year and next year.
But during the end of the year twenty twenty one, it sounds like we may not have that much.
Not too much, right.
And last year, we had a thousand dollars budgeted, so...
So you, one thing to consider with this, though, is that you guys are, you're not working on personnel manual updates, and you're gonna allow a lawyer to risk that?
Well, that would fall under the township solicitor special, not the labor relations line.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanna up the solicitor special line due to that, or where you would put it. So you guys have to come up with a number, um, changing that two thousand we just put in?
Given the infrequency of activity, do you think two thousand might be reasonable?
Um, it's possible. I know if you contact a lawyer and ask them to do from zero to a hundred personnel, it'll cost you...
Um, it's possible. I know if you contact a lawyer and ask them to do from zero to a hundred personnel, it will cost you spending on a lawyer five to nine thousand dollars.
Right.
We're not coming and asking a person to do a zero to a hundred update.
Right.
Because we'll bump them with something new to update.
They're reviewing something.
So maybe three thousand, um, minimal with this.
Well, let, let me, I'm looking four oh four, three one four. That, that looks to be, Jacob, I think you said that, that was the price we had to pay for the mediation. That was an attorney that, that handled it.
Yeah, that was the, the retired judge.
There was a, then there was a fee that we paid.
Yes.
Well, yeah, 'cause that, that had to be split between us and, uh.
Three of us.
Yeah.
All right, but special attorney labor relations, let's go back to that. Uh, Lynn had ta- taken a look at what it was in the last negotiation. That was twenty-eighteen. And initially in, in, um, I think it was definitely November, December, maybe even late October when we began. It was, it came out to what, seventy-nine hundred bucks?
I, I wanna say it was closer to like nine thousand, I saw, eight, nine thousand. But again, that's gonna be spent in twenty-twenty.
Well, that's, that's what we're saying, so what, what, were you and I, well, what you and I talked about was, what did you see in twenty-nineteen?
So, so next year. Yeah, and I only saw in, in that year, like, about two thousand, when we were in that January, February, 'cause now they were finalizing the negotiations.
So, yeah, twenty-twenty-one, we talked maybe three grand, to be fair.
So you made. Yeah.
And labor relations.
And someone's billing me all of the, like, you try to identify it on the crew basis.
Right.
Is it two thousand still for the special?
Or did you wanna up it?
You're gonna have your labor.
I thought maybe we, uh, but.
Yeah, I think three thousand on, on both of those sounds reasonable.
Three thousand, yeah.
We consider, I wonder if, at least the labor relations guy, I wonder if we should ask him to take a look at our handbook.
He's union.
Well, I, I'm not more than union. He's a labor relations guy. There it is. And he just does union work and, and that's part of the show. He has the jail and he has the county. Been around. We probably run into him another time. It's, her name, Tom Heimbach, Attorney Heimbach. Okay, now we're up here. One sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Well, that's done, a candidate.
It's a guest estimate, right?
Yeah, I think.
So we're at two thousand now, so what do we have in there?
I would say two thousand for twenty-one.
Yeah, two thousand seems reasonable, given that, you know, that there's just a number of things, even if they're not contentious, that, that she'll have to be here for.
Yeah. Right.
Like tonight.
Yeah.
Office general expenses, again, uh.
That's gonna be office supplies.
Yeah, and, uh.
And I was ordering a lot of stuff for COVID, like Crocs, wipes and sanitizer.
Still.
Uh, say six thousand because, uh, we bumped it up from prior year's budget just a little bit. I would, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So six thousand would be.
All right, I think that's good.
Right.
Plus these expenses, uh, oh, some of that is covered and some of it isn't.
And that's, I mean, I went putting postage on the machine, a hundred and fifty dollars each time we need a refill, um.
Are you doing more mailing now because of COVID?
I don't think so. Well, I think it's the same, um.
Yeah, I don't think anything's really changed as far as anything outdone.
No.
We had, if anything, we had, uh, we had more, but it wasn't due to COVID. It was because we had been, uh, mailing, uh, you know, zoning hearing, uh, notices and, and things like that, so.
And we had the major one on the ED revision.
Right.
It's like the annualization and the prior year budget are pretty close to a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Petty cash is, you know, if somebody pays for, you know, a copy and, and change or, or something like that.
Theoretically, that should go into the, um, account to which it's the same, so.
Well, as an, as an expense though.
Right.
I would say three hundred looks about reasonable with the, you know, so far.
And again, that's, uh, when we go to petty cash, I know Lynn, you'll have a drawer, she's gonna get involved in and all this stuff, so this we replenish. Document management expenses.
Um, I'm gonna assume that is SCAN Tech, because that's the first time, um.
That is.
But we gotta rethink that. I know, Jacob, you've been talking to, and, and Julia, you've been talking to Tony.
Right.
SCAN Tech going into, uh, continuing. ADN's gonna be set up with Tony next week, I believe.
Well, so the reason Tony is coming next week is to look over the ordinance, excuse me, the resolutions and the documents that we need from the Federal Association, so we can destroy the documents that.
Okay, that they have, that's, and that's primarily what he's gonna be here for, but then we might maybe sit and see where, where we go from that. What's our next step? Do, do we go into, um, into that, slowly there, the filing room over by you? Or we go into Ken's office again? There's, we have a, 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 some choices, and we still have a, a bunch of stuff, so we would take a look at the pri- and prioritize it, but that, that's a a consideration for twenty-twenty-one, if we're gonna be spending that amount.
Well, my, my bet is it probably wouldn't be the, the same, given the volume that we've, you know, brought for this year.
Probably started with, yeah.
So you don't wanna put like twenty thousand?
Well, are we planning to get this done in twenty-twenty-one?
No, it must come out.
I, I don't know exactly how much we have. I'd rather, you know, we could wait maybe till next week, but my, my bet is that, that's gonna be like, who's coming when? Thursday?
Wow. And feasibly, we'll all have, so we could start working on putting this in something else.
Right.
I would say our staff are gonna pay them a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour to do this for us.
Right.
So, yeah, I wanna just put ten or whatever.
Yeah, I would, I would say, maybe like twelve, five.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think that it's not gonna be nearly as much, given the, the in-house capabilities that, that we're gonna have, and, you know, it'll come down to mostly management at, at this point. Of, of those documents. I'm sure they'll take some stuff maybe, depending on what we're able to do ourselves, but that was a good point Julia made.
Advertising.
I keep poking our records on that.
And, uh, and again, the advertising, uh, we, we, because of all of the, uh, condition use hearings we've had and postings and special meetings.
Yes, these are crazy, you know, all around.
Yes, it, it is. Uh, yep, uh, Water Gap and all of those meetings and public hearings, so, geez, do you think maybe we, we, we could go back to normal? I mean, what's, what's on, what's on that horizon?
I would say close, maybe like five, 'cause, 'cause given that, uh, the special means, 'cause, you know, we're gonna be, who knows how many more public hearings we're going to be holding in regards to, to Water Gap and other conditional uses and.
What happens in municipalities where there is no local newspaper? Coming, our webinar that was coming by the, right, some open, they, they involve that, and what they're saying is that, uh, gotta be some, a, a paper, a newspaper, a copy, and if, if you don't have one in, you know, like in, uh, county. Maybe, maybe you have to go to, uh, down there, if you, if you have that obligation.
Well, I mean, that's advertising for every single meeting that we have, the budget work sessions, they're all advertised, so.
Right, uh, with, with, yeah, but I, I.
I think it should be higher than.
Well, they're up, the budget work sessions are a good thing, but, but when we, what we sit to, uh, at, at a reorganization meeting, we said we'll have work sessions in general, uh, every Wednesday as needed, it's, it's once and done. Same thing with the supervisors meeting, so, so that's off the table. Off the table, oh my gosh, you guys.
I know the legislature's been trying for years.
Amen, and, uh.
The newspaper lobby keeps pushing it to be on the newspaper.
Right.
But it is, it's moving.
I think that'd be even more expensive though, with, with, with the online, just because it'll be more lucrative. They won't have to print and they can say, oh, well, now we have so much more online, so therefore, still five hundred. I, I guess what I'm saying is I think five thousand would be reasonable, because I, I don't think it'll be nearly as bad, you know, next year, but in terms of, you know, contentious things, but with limiting, you know, the advertisements to.
The obligation.
From five thousand?
I, I put the five thousand in about ten minutes ago.
Okay, good.
Printing and binding.
I see that though.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we had to have some things done.
Mm, okay.
Well, that could probably just go into the same, uh.
Above, yeah, if so here, like that.
Yeah, I think that's covered in the salary, because the problem is if it's bringing that again, we'll.
Get new cards. And then when, when, went to Frank Smith, I don't, I, uh, the reason I went to Frank Smith is because we needed to supply because of a request with some information. Uh, but it, again, in right to no situations, you can't bill for that, so would this be okay to just leave it in there occasionally? But anyway, doesn't matter.
You wanna bump the, the bulk expense up to fifteen hundred? 'Cause it really should probably all be in four, six, not three, five, three.
It should be in three, five, three, right? No, I mean.
Let's do that.
Yeah, like maybe like, like maybe like twelve fifty for that one, 'cause I, business cards, we don't run through those terribly quickly.
But no, wait, do what? No.
Yeah, let's go to twelve fifty. That's what I was thinking, if you just, it's, you're not gonna be bringing in a.
Right, the Frank Smith thing was un- unusual.
Okay, make it twelve fifty for the line four oh six dot three four three.
Right.
Zero four four oh six dot three four one. Um, that's to treasure bond expense?
I don't know what that's gonna be.
Treasures bond expense.
For the next year, that's Frank's following.
Bond.
It, it could increase, uh.
Right.
It's been stable, it's, uh, seventeen fifty, um, worst case scenario, make it, you know, like, uh.
Wanna make it two thousand or keep it the same?
I think we should keep it the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
Let's make it eighteen hundred.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm not sure we're attending. Um, bank service charges, um, closer to a hundred than two fifty.
I think a hundred sounds good.
Here's the capital purchases. I guess you had fifteen thousand expected last year. So far, we're only wishing it about seven thousand.
Julia, do you have the numbers that?
I do, um, yeah, Jacob actually looked into this and what we're planning on buying for next year, so that can be.
Okay.
Wait, ten thousand five? Is that okay?
And that's, and the, the reason it's ten thousand five is, ten thousand fifty, ten thousand five.
Ten thousand five.
Ten thousand five, that, that would include, 'cause we have a myriad of, of different, uh, things, so that, that would include, uh, software to an extent, but also, um, any new hardware that we might have to purchase to supplement the, the COVID grant that, that we got from the county. And, uh, the other part would be, the part that saves us money from SCAN Tech would be, um, is, at Best Buy, they have a, uh, I don't, I don't remember if it's Best Buy specifically, but it's like eighteen by thirty-six, or, I forget the dimensions, but it's like a printer copier and, and scanner that is, uh, you know, commercial grade, so we wouldn't have to go elsewhere to make prints.
Um, you mentioned the COVID grant, um, do you guys have that already? Do you have that money?
Uh, uh, yes and no.
Yeah.
Due by November fifteenth.
So if you're gonna get some money.
That's, that's one.
So we'll get some money in twenty-twenty, but we're not spending it.
Uh, no, we're spending it now, um, spending that money now, and we have to have all of that spent and, 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 and November fifteenth.
Okay, okay, so when you're talking, then on this line item, this computer, computer capital purchases should have nothing to do with the COVID grant, correct? And, and, and I just want to make sure.
Uh, no, it includes the buffer to purchase hardware if, if we had to supplement, um, that, yeah.
Okay, I got it, got it, all right, I'm clear. Okay, IT, social media consultant?
I kept that one the same.
And what is that?
That's Carissa.
And we have her down far, then what, what's her line item?
She's at eight.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Yeah, it looks like that's about where you'll land at the end of the year anyhow.
Right.
Are you talking to the computer maintenance?
Well, I'm not gonna spend any money in that damn thing I have in there.
Right, right.
I'm gonna get nothing.
Right, right. So what did I put that one at? I think I put that one at somewhere like twenty-three.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred.
That's, that would be, oh, Sundance.
Right, 'cause that, that's Sundance and, uh, well, that's all their services, not just, uh, the maintenance.
Right.
Okay, but that covers you, because you never know what's gonna happen with sixty-three.
Right, e- e- exactly. And then the next one, website expenses and supplies, that one is different now.
Fifty-five hundred.
That one's fifty-five hundred, 'cause we completed new website, and now it's just, uh, maintenance on that, uh, additional digital software for its, uh, security and performance, and, um, you know, anything that, that might come up. And then I think that also includes, uh, uh, software plugins. I think that Savvy Citizen is in that one, but.
I'm good, on board. Township engineer?
Oh, it's with Shane, Shane.
Well, we budgeted forty, annualized, it looks like thirty, so, what do you say?
And, and this is township engineer expenses to us, that are not reflecting what can be reimbursed. So, I, I think thirty.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable. 'Cause that's mostly just stuff that we asked them to do, that's just us, right?
Instead of starting from four, yeah, probably be.
Right, making the trestler drive up there. At least he came back.
Yeah. Engineers, engineering fees reimbursable. So.
Well, a follow-up, I'm sorry, just to chime in here.
Yeah.
Three sixty-one dot one oh, not, dot zero zero one, engineering fees reimbursable, we estimated about twenty-five thousand dollars of income. Um, so I'm hoping that the reimbursement expenses are not above twenty-five thousand.
You know, I think both of those might be low, given that gateway is, you know, well, not only that, but they're beginning in earnest for, um.
Yeah, I mean, when you annual, when we annualized it, it came up to forty. The actual expenses are close to forty. I think both of those numbers should be around forty thousand.
Well, let me go, Lynn, you've done it, and just recently you updated, and, and, and our invoices again, and our engineering, engineering fees right now, we have a, we have outstanding numbers, um.
I mean, there's still a lot of people that haven't paid.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So.
And, and, yeah, you're wrong, you'll get paid if, 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 period. Yeah, well, like I just had to call somebody yesterday because of an invoice in May, the way that.
In May, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's other. Astro fund, is there a, a way we can maximize using that more than, you're getting money upfront versus having to re, you know, get reimbursed?
I've tried that too, Holly, where I'm asked, uh, in the time, like I give them fair warning, your escrow, you know, if they've had it in the past, is getting depleted, um, you do worry at this time, and I don't, I don't get anywhere with that.
But, and the other end of that, builder's agreement now, it's, uh, one of the, uh, items that we asked for there is to establish an escrow account, and over the years, we've done that. We'll go to our engineer, who will go through the developer's engineer, and they come up with a, 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 a number that they both agree on, just recently now for the, uh, the, um, tower. Eighteen, or eighty-nine thousand dollars will be in a escrow account for that. Uh, it's an escrow gateway, where, uh.
Well, this concerns me that are we, like, on the fall in the, in the range of about fifteen thousand dollars a year, where, you know, you're just never going to have that amount up?
And it's brought it off.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, because your reimbursable income is fifteen thousand dollars less than your.
And it, it, but it, you're right, and it shouldn't be, because there's two major delinquent accounts, significant monies, and when push comes to shove, it should be this year. One of these particular developers comes in and says, hey, listen, we're working with you, we're working with you sometime, you owe us money, pay up. Pay up, come back. It's hard, it's hard to know, but this, it, it's becoming a lot of money. The other thing is, we spent thousands of dollars on, uh, the wellness center and, and Water Gap, and we've never, we never charged.
Yeah, we're almost at like twenty thousand.
We got it.
So is it considered reimbursable?
Well, we, we're going to look into that. Maybe, maybe we'd ask for your expertise on that.
I've never billed them.
Oh, you would, you would.
Okay, if it sounds like you're offering at a deficit of about fifteen thousand, then I would say you get reimbursable expense at forty, because that's conservative, leave the income at twenty-five for now. You know, unless, you know, you start something completely, you know, I think.
Right, well, we're going to see things improve. They have to improve. It's got to be in twenty twenty.
So, I'll have Sharon, take, follow up with that as part of the four year, to make sure that.
So do you want to put, uh, do you want to plug something in there?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand as the. Already at thirty-one, if it annualizes, it comes to thirty-three, I think that is reasonable.
All right. The water intestine, that's consistent, five hundred, seven, I don't know, five hundred.
Right, and, and, and that hasn't happened yet, so you could bill me at the end of the year.
Let's put that five hundred, it looks like it was missed last year.
Yep. Supplies, again, we're, we're getting into that situation, we have office supplies, now we have supplies, lend supplies.
Um, Sharon, can you click on that one, four oh nine, uh, two thirty-six? That's small. What kind of purchase?
Uh, Kiko, Granger, Walmart, EJ's, Bell General, Smithfield. I'm thinking less than a hundred dollars.
Right.
Water delivery.
So, so that, that's supply.
So probably a thousand would be all right.
That's, yeah.
That would be that, mhm. Did we leave money or equipment? Um, you budgeted four, five thousand last year, we're at about fifteen hundred, and you must say two thousand would probably be a, a good number for that.
I just do. What's, you're going to go with?
A thousand on that.
Water testing, uh, again.
That, that would be, uh, profit labs testing our water.
And have.
It looks like it comes out about three, three hundred a year, so I would just put three hundred, eight hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, you had five hundred last year, about this year.
Cleaning service, that's, uh, they usually come in with a, with a new, a new invoice for, for each year, mind you, remember?
You haven't had to play, say anything for cleaning, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Better less.
Who are we, okay, which ones did we go through while I was done, just so I could get stuff.
Um, on supplies.
Do you creek water testing?
Who is the, uh, who do you pay for?
Denise Klaus. See what, if you can see what account number I put there, um.
Where is.
Jacob water testing, that's every hundred.
Creek water testing is five hundred, five hundred for here.
Okay.
Right, you're right setting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just read it down, five hundred.
Uh-huh.
Um, then skip that next one, then it's a thousand.
Right.
Or the five.
Yeah.
Uh, two thousand, and then three hundred on water testing.
Oh, okay.
Now we're on cleaning service.
Right.
Which would be the girl.
And we're just finding out where it's coming from.
Yeah, I'm just curious, where did that, you know, which account?
Okay.
Is that in there? You haven't paid her all year?
Oh, yeah, we have.
I know, I mean, she bills me like for, like, four or five month intervals.
Yeah, but there, it's, like, if you had paid in the name of Denise Klaus, it wouldn't come up, and there's nothing coming off this month's.
And we did, I think, at the last meeting, I think we paid, as you said, and it was three weeks.
Oh, it might not be on, no, it's, and the version, okay, so if it's been off till work, then we don't have it on here yet, because we have up to September here.
But, but we pay her in twenty twenty.
Well, and you got to remember with COVID, we, they were not in here, so.
Officially.
They may have come in, you know, maybe the last time they in clean was the beginning of March, and then they were not in here for months, because we were not open to the public.
Well, actually, they, they did come in on a special, a special request when we're going to have a big meeting.
Yeah, that's not a billing for it, because there's, there's no payments in here since September.
We, we had to, we.
So if, if.
We had to pay them.
In October.
We had to pay them.
So, um, for twenty twenty-one, assuming that like us, we're doing.
Yeah.
I want to know.
And I, I'm, I'm old fashioned, Holly, I'm going to look straight in my hard copy file.
Well, if that's the case, then it's totally, totally missing in equipment.
Yeah, well, I don't understand that.
I think we can slowly do it thirty, thirty hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, their rates don't really change.
No, she hasn't raised them.
No, sorry, that's, that's a good point.
But I will look in the file, Holly, because I'm curious.
Yeah, I am too.
And she doesn't know we do it ten ninety-nine for.
Yeah, well, yeah, so.
It's city's club claiming service.
Yeah, mhm.
Yeah, you'll get that.
Okay.
Telephone.
Uh, looks like five thousand is pretty close.
Yeah.
Fifty five hundred.
Okay, five.
Five thousand.
Jacob, do we have any plans for upgrading our phone?
I, I have to, I have to look, but my, my bet is that the landlines won't change significantly at, at the moment. But, I mean, at least we have, you have the line item for, you know, that, and anything that would change would be, you know, within that.
Airless subscription.
Yes, that is in, uh, the line items that we already did, uh, for the computers, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, this, this line item should only be what your service charges on.
This is, sorry.
Right.
Horizon telephone bill.
Yeah.
As well as the next one is just going to be the Med Ed electric, uh, for the two buildings here.
Annualized, it looks like it's coming up, open at ten, and it went last, well, last year, so it should be ten thousand.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Mhm.
However, I don't know, there's not much we can do about the phone area.
The fuel, nothing. Trash removal, I'd say seven thousand, good, yeah, yeah. Propane. I mean, I mean, it was a mild winter last year, so, I don't know, do you use the propane for your heat?
Uh, propane gases, gases actually decrease.
That's, it's strictly sort of a garage, though.
It's, yeah, well, it's just a garage.
And, but does it heat, it's, it's not, um.
A little bit. That, our garage is, 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 is not totally heated.
I just was wondering, because we had a mild winter last year.
Right.
And we're around seven thousand, that we budgeted ninety five hundred, so.
I think it's probably safer to keep it at that.
Ninety-five?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and again, they fluctuate even more so than oil. Uh, it's, it's, it's been a downward trend, parts of gas.
Twelve thousand and twenty eighteen and seven and twenty, thirty, thirty five. That's a nine or ninety five hundred?
Ninety five hundred.
Ninety five hundred, okay. And then municipal building repairs and maintenance, um, what do you anticipate? Because last year you budgeted twenty, you have actual eight around now, so. Are you on any further maintenance?
Uh, well, that's a good point. We, we're going to have to do something for the, uh, for our new tenant, or not our new tenant, but our tenant downstairs had some demands. Jacob is looking into it, I'll be looking into it a little bit.
Right.
Some requests, and, uh, we want to reflect that, again, as what we charge in new rents, so we'll get our gear together on that, but. For the most part, what, what do we have? We're insu, we're insured, but major, uh, for instance, we have a geothermal system, and once in a while, it doesn't fail, but, but the process in, interior does, and, uh, we have a company we used to do that.
Can you click on that, just to see what, if that, if that brings that one on that?
And who's, who's our, who's our.
Our heaters are heating and air conditioning.
Okay.
Maybe that should be closer, like. Right.
Yeah.
Help determine, because I'm not done pricing out everything yet, but it's not going to be nothing.
That's it is stupid heat, that's.
Yeah. Okay.
That's probably the contrast.
Spring, uh, I think, is it spring and fall?
How much was that?
Twenty-three, fourteen, okay. For maintenance.
Right, yearly, yes, mhm.
So, eight thousand is, um, where you're at, twelve would be annualized, usually what you're budgeted, but it really sounds like it's closer to the twelve range, if you're just talking about routine maintenance.
Twelve would be next.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we put twelve thousand in there?
Sure.
What do you do, building, I would just leave it at zero, unless you're cleaning something, if I think there's anything.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so then is the Marshall's Creek Fire Company Equipment Insurance, one third.
And that's where all three townships, I don't know, say a third, a third, or a third, of Price Township, Middle Smithfield, and, uh.
Yes, and, uh.
Oh. That is strictly.
Right, that's a part payment.
Marshall's Creek Insurance. This is not, um. Yeah, this is, uh, the Cummings Insurance Bill that we received.
Right, this is just our, our portion of it, right.
Yeah. And again, I don't know what that would be increased to.
Is that what we just billed for, now that?
Yes. Part of it, because this is equipment from Marshall's Creek Fire Company, and then the other portion is the workers' comp.
Yeah, a different line item, of course, but. This, this is a, a line item, I think, that we talked about a little bit, uh, and then explained to us, is, is this the one where they go on it and, and they go to the company we use, use Eddie McCormick's name, charge it, and then.
No, no, that's, that was the Service Fire Truck Center, uh, bill that I just got.
Where's that, where's the line item?
It's about thirteen thousand, um, you, and that's about where you're at, um.
Yeah, that's, you're looking at Cummings Insurance.
The, the bills that we just, we worked with you on.
Mm.
You're going to give us the name of the insurance, I mean, I mean, we have that in another file, with the bill.
Yeah, because I get, I get, I get emailed the bills from Cummings Insurance, and strictly that one is, um, Marshall's Creek's equipment, um, policy. And that, I do incorporate that into the bills that you created, with the workers' comp is lying in there for insurance for equipment. I gave you like one Cummings Insurance bill, we pay it four times a year. That was part of that reimbursement. Um, but if you look up Cummings Insurance, like, what I pay each time, um, off the top of my head, I can't recall, I pay lots and lots and lots of bills. Um, but I want to say between probably three. Three.
Looks like it was four thousand, maybe, Lynn?
Yeah, it could have been closer. I know that, uh, at one time we talked about, um, because Shawnee Fire Company's equ, equipment insurance is through, um, Brown and Brown.
With us.
Yeah.
Are we still talking about four eleven, three fifty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marshall's Creek had gotten their own insurance company, I guess, years ago, before I ever started here, they dealt with Cummings Insurance. And so we just get billed quarterly from Cummings Insurance, strictly from Marshall's Creek, uh, equipment.
And, and we really don't have any part of negotiations, what they do, what they save, so.
Okay, well, it was just requested for reimbursement from them, about fifteen hundred eighty-seven years, listen, they, they said about fifteen thousand. So, I'd say fifteen thousand for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, call it, call it fifteen.
I don't know.
Yeah, it seems to go up every year. Fire and fire relief, um, that comes from the state, it's money that comes in, and then I disperse it immediately out, certain percentages to each fire company, um.
And, and we.
It has gone down each year, it kind of stayed the same as last year, so I mean.
Forty-eight five?
Yeah.
Well, the, the mu, what's gone down is the monies that were reimbursed.
Okay, we have on the income side forty-eight thousand, and if you're getting in and sending it all back out, then we really should make that forty-eight thousand again as well. And we're bump, bump up the income side.
Well, I mean, the, the, the exact amount that comes in from the state, I mean, it is an exact amount.
It, it doesn't change through that forty-eight?
Well, it could, you know, yeah, well, like I'm saying, if you see this forty-eight thousand right now, five sixty-four, ninety-three, that's exactly what I got in from the state.
Is that going to exactly be the same amount for two thousand twenty?
Well, maybe just call both forty-eight.
That's okay.
Okay.
It's fine. If we have no exact number for.
Right.
Twenty twenty-one.
Fire company contribution, um, that's what the township gives twice a year to all the fire companies, and, um, once a year to the two ambulance companies.
So, you, um, uh, it is one twenty-seven and seven respectively, and you dispersed that, so what do you want to do this year? What is it based on?
The cable, uh, franchise and then extra for, so that's, you know, the one twenty and then extra out of somewhere for, um, for suburban and, and.
Well, yeah, what happens is the cable, the cable, money's going to our general fund, and out of that general fund, we, we target this particular. It's a little higher than the cable.
Cable revenue is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Aren't they about a hundred and twenty-one? Yeah, we, and we.
Right, we are a little bit higher. We did just increase it, um, last year for the fire companies.
Right.
And the ambulance companies, so.
So that's why I want to ask, for twenty twenty-one, do you expect to increase it again, or?
That's just a, a word.
Well. I'm sure they'll ask, I don't know.
I think one twenty-seven is the, the, the safest bet for, for right now.
One twenty-seven and seven thousand dollars for the one below it?
No, 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 I meant like, uh, like somewhere, like the one twenty or so is the cable franchise, and then we pull seven thousand out somewhere else and add that, and then that becomes the one twenty-seven. The next thing, that, that's, that's workers' comp, I, I, is my guess.
Designated ambulance quarter contribution, I thought that's what you were talking about, workers' comp. Oh, I'm sorry, I was skipping the line because, uh, these two items seem to be related with, uh, ambulance core contribution, is that seven thousand going to stay the same? Is it one twenty-seven, is it the same?
Oh, okay, yeah, so the fire companies is the one twenty-seven, okay?
Right.
And the ambulance is seven thousand, that's current.
Okay, and then ambulance core workman's comp looks to be about seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, uh, there's, okay, uh, quick background, the, the Bushkill Emergency Ambulance Responders is part private, privately owned. Uh, we've never taken that into consideration, it's, 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 it's our ambulance service, our primary one. And, uh, we found out, uh, last year that there was a claim, uh, uh, one of the ambulance responders was hurt at a fire. And it turns out that they submitted the claim through Marshall's Creek Fire Company, who went to Cummings, and Cummings came back to us, and, and we said that no. And it turns out that they submitted the claim through Marshall's Creek Fire Company who went to Cummings and Cummings came back to us and we said that no, uh, this person is an employee and is covered under the Workers' Comp, uh, program for that company. So, that's why it's probably around there, they have- they have- they have employees, paid employees and they have volunteers.
Right.
I think we can keep it the same.
Well, yeah, why don't you put a star on that though, Julia, we gotta look into that too.
Like, do you- do you, um, typically step in for the ambulance core workers' comp?
Yeah, well, and that's what we're doing here and this- this is, uh, we do.
But I think seven hundred is, what, the budget is close to that for actual, I think seven hundred dollars is leaving, you know, for now would be fine.
Yep, that's probably why we don't-
Yeah, probably, we spent seven fifty, seven fifty, six thirty, so, fine.
Okay, S D M I line is the zero, building code enforcement?
Yeah.
That's the Kino, for the most part, that'd be base engineering, but-
Oh, the Kino. We get billed from, uh, we get billed quarterly.
This is D C E D, right?
Building code enforcement?
No, this is building code enforcement.
Right, but doesn't base have their own separate line item? Or- or is that-
I get billed quarterly-
Okay.
From, um, no, you're right, cause that's what goes out to, but the bill comes from base engineering to me quarterly, check gets made out, uh, to D C E D.
I'm not sure why twelve hundred dollars was, um, budgeted for twenty twenty-
Right.
But we've only expended fifty-three dollars so far this year, and we're allowed to come back to two hundred.
What happens is, uh-
Back in twenty nineteen, you spent twelve hundred at this line item, twenty eighteen, it was just under a thousand, so that's probably why we got twelve hundred.
Let's keep it at twelve hundred then.
I don't understand that sixty-three dollars either.
Cause you might have more coming down the line yet.
Yeah.
Right. The salary and zoning officer, we have from last one, that's already in there, um, the next two would be zero. D C, Denver, Z H B, what's that?
That would be zoning hearing board.
It's been zeros, we get on the planner, the planner was budgeted, but it's still zero this year.
They haven't, uh, this year.
We didn't use a planner this year.
Right.
So, excuse me, should we market for the zoning board hearing next year?
I think so, I- even if it's, uh, to go to the zoning hearing board, uh, they do, uh, they, um, people who wanna go to the zoning hearing board, for hearing pay and what we do is we look at the- the, and it's fifteen hundred dollars and we look at the actual cost and if it's only a thousand dollars, we reimburse- reimburse it five. But as I say, we've had nobody yet coming, we're doing a lot of work, uh, that is done by the supervisors, uh, it's a choice we have in some instances where we don't have to go into zoning hearing board matters and- and, um, take it upon ourselves to, uh, make the decisions.
Yeah, and we add application fees, we, hearing application fees, we estimate at three thousand.
Right.
So-
So, if it's three thousand, then- then it- then it's gonna cost fifteen hun- that's two of them, that's two hearings.
And- and when we get, you know, the sonographer's bill, it's usually like, like one fifty per-
Yeah.
About three hundred, two would be on the side, probably for this.
Planner fees, uh, any income?
That's only expenses planning and zoning, do you have to put a number on that? Four fourteen, two thirty-nine.
I wish, I'm still at four fourteen, one eighteen, there was three thousand budgeted in the past, it's zero so far, do you need to budget for that?
When we say planner fees, are- are we going back to Tom Comida, do you think, and at the end of Tom and then finally going with Judy, but Jesus, Judy was-
That's what I think it was.
That would be my guess, but- but I guess my question though is the-
There's a lot more.
What are the miscellaneous expenses for, you know, planning and zoning?
Jared, can you click on the, um, four fourteen, two thirty-nine account?
So, maybe you've got it there, but then it was budgeted for that last year.
What are we paying her?
I got a lot, yeah, yeah.
So-
Thirty, twenty?
The eighteen fifty is C F Davidson?
And you know, I agree, she's gone.
I know, she's just killed.
Important, maybe, that is.
She says she's very happy, I didn't get any more information.
What is it, C F Davidson?
Well, I, after- after this, I-
Does that sound familiar to you too?
Tony General sent me another one.
Uh, that's the- the, maybe the G I F program.
Oh.
Or Ken.
Okay.
Annual renewal for minimums, twelve dollars, materials for posting, zoning, ninety-one dollars. So, the biggest expense is just annual subscription.
For the G I F?
Mhm.
Annual subscription.
So, that's in the miscellaneous, so that looks like it's down, like, seventy, around three thousand every year.
That's Ken's G I F, yeah, two thousand sounds probable.
Two thousand, and then the question is, anything going in for planners?
I don't think so, we've just done our major revisions, at this point, it's minor revisions.
Twenty twenty-one, we should be finished up with it, you're right, as far as planning, we have the E D, we're gonna make major revisions to that.
Right, that'll be handled by Ron and- and Bishay and James, and that'll come out in regular.
Ah, you got him, I don't-
But there'll be expenses, but they're not-
Yeah, so back in twenty seventeen, and the planner fees, there was seventeen thousand dollars in expenses and six thousand, that's been nothing. Cause that was Tom Comida.
And that was Tom Comida.
I think that has to do with the building, right? Um, I don't know what- what would-
Well, Tom Comida did planning on, you know, E D, or it's not E D, but like overlay zones and marketing concepts, a couple of packets and binders that we have from that work.
Yeah, well, yeah, he met, he probably met four or five, maybe six times, we did the tour on the bus, uh, we got people together, we had a public meeting, we had the employers and, or employees. Yeah, he did a lot of extensive work and he presented a good program and then we had, uh, taken what we felt was the best of that, we went and hired another company, Bishay and James, and we spent well over twenty thousand dollars on that, so the last couple of years, we were well over forty grand.
And then planner fees? Is that, I'm sorry, what's the connection with planner?
But this is all, this is all expenses in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, so it's not-
Yeah, I think- I think zero is, yeah, I think zero is fine.
We haven't had anything in the past three years, let's just leave it at zero.
Yeah.
For the, uh, that zoning hearing board?
For planner? No, four- four fourteen dot one eighteen planner fees.
Yeah, I've got the, right.
We're gonna leave it at zero because there's been no expenses in the last few years, even though there was a, um, an allocation last year, we're gonna leave it at zero this year.
Right, yeah, zero sounds good. Something is there, right, it said zero.
Zero, yeah, and then the next one we're gonna be up to is four fourteen, three ten, the law, um, hearing board.
We never spent anything, excuse me, but historically in twenty seventeen, there were seven thousand dollars of expenses, twenty eighteen, thousand, twenty thousand.
And again, that's predicated on the, we have to have a, uh, zoning hearing board solicitor, other than our solicitor, of course. And it's like-
No, I mean, we're- we're estimating maybe two hearings, so maybe the twelve hundred might be-
Yeah.
Is about there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And zoning hearing board advertising expense, it looks like it's the minimum, it's, it's, and you can't believe it, it's zero for now.
That word might be.
Uh, nothing has ever gone into that line item, the planner fees.
There, uh, it's got, when we have a zoning hearing board meeting, it has to be advertised.
I know, but I guess you put in the other-
It's somewhere else.
I probably put it under the regular advertising line.
Okay, hold on, with zero.
We also collect, what, fifteen hundred dollars?
We collect fifteen and- and reimburse for what we don't hear this, yeah.
Our county control center, um, usually they send me what our four quarterly payments are gonna be for the next year, but I didn't- I didn't get a figure from them.
Not yet.
Does that typically go- typically- typically go up?
It- it seems to have been the same, I think.
Actually, a couple of times, they- they, a couple of times, they didn't even charge us for two quarters.
Right.
Depends on where they are.
What benefits do we get?
At the control center, we're- we're involved with, uh, the NIMs projects and-
Well, the control center is- is not a county agency, it- it's very, we might be one of the only ones in the state, but ours is not, you know, run by the county, so it's- it's like, kinda like Bushkill, interstates like that.
Everybody's good, you know?
Yeah.
It's pro-rated.
We are consistent sixteen, let's be serious.
Yeah. Right.
There's cat's face.
Uh?
Right.
That could, I think it's been zero.
That'd be zero, zero.
And then oak grove composite, maybe extra?
We have to pay a portion, um, to remove that in conjunction, so, we practically just paid a bill, um-
Did Michelle send us that?
I said that a couple of weeks ago.
Annualize is around seventy-three hundred, um, you had ten thousand left, so I think seventy-five hundred looks like it would be a good. I'd like to just re-bump that up.
Yeah, in twenty eighteen, um, when it's twenty eighteen.
You get a ten thousand?
Well, they were, actually, they were startup years and- and- and we weren't really, uh, generating any kind of monies. We, uh, we had the oak grove facility now, uh, with- with income and it's- it's, there's three of us, three municipalities involved and we have a board of directors and I don't know, do you guys meet, do we meet for- for the budget this year?
They were supposed to meet on Columbus Day, they pushed it back till, I think, November ninth.
So, here's an income component today, is that something that must be overstepped?
No.
Or is it netted out of what you have to pay?
Right, and- and what happens is- is the income is strictly generated by people who use the facility and it's into the oak grove. As well as the board of directors and, you know, I say it's for the municipalities, it goes strictly for, like, expenses.
Cause the seventy-five hundred now still remains, or do you wanna keep it at ten thousand?
It's been, as I say, it started off a little, when we first started this, we had to put a lot of our own monies into it, all three of us, and it's pro-rated. But- but we seem to be fairly, uh, stable.
I just made another payment and I don't know if- if that's reflected in- in the-
The forty-nine?
Exactly, the hundred, then it's not.
Yeah, I don't recall, um, exactly which week I paid it, um-
So, do we keep this at ten thousand, they can put it for last year?
I think, uh, let's go with the seventy- seventy-five hundred, um, again, again, this all comes into play when we try to balance this budget, there's no reason to go more expenses, we don't have to.
Okay.
I think-
Seventy-five hundred is good?
Yep.
Okay, let's go to re-grant, recycling grant expense, I think that was a problem that, on the income side, I don't know that we are expecting to receive anything, am I correct there on the big one?
We- recycling expenses, other, I have no idea what that is.
Well, that's not, three twenty-six dot euro.
Oh, that's a combination and, uh, I don't know.
Euro five euro, recycling grant expense, that would be tied to one of the grants, I don't think-
We're still waiting to get the one hundred, or two hundred and sixty, four thousand.
Isn't there a good chance we get that before the end of this calendar year?
That was filed, right? Yeah, I hope so.
I wouldn't- I wouldn't expect it to come next year, you know, I think as opposed to that, it'll come this year.
Yeah, I don't, we didn't, we didn't look at any recycling grant, make it, um, on the income side, so we have to say that that would have to be zero on the expense side, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Okay. Recycling grant match. And I guess that's gonna be taken care of in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty as well?
I don't even know what that's-
Well, that would be the, our match to that grant. Right, Julia, am I correct in that?
I don't think.
Uh, that thirty-two thousand, yes, that's the matching grant.
What we said?
We were speaking, we've already spent that money and we're asking for a reimbursement, so that shouldn't have no type of anything to do with that.
Okay, so then that one will be zero too, as well.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're-
So, would we, I'm sorry, I missed, uh, the last three items, is, oh, five, oh?
We need oh five zero and oh six zero, we're both at zero.
Okay.
Great cleanup, there's a twenty thousand dollars expended, expended.
Right, and this is not reflecting, cause again, it went through September, sorry, this isn't, uh, reflecting that I just paid almost nineteen thousand dollars for our cleanup expense, so.
Okay, so is the bill fifteen, is it the spring?
No, I, um, it was, well, we didn't have to clean up because of COVID, so we had a full cleanup.
Okay. Okay, so leave it at twenty thousand?
Leave it at twenty.
Yeah, I think going forward, I think it should probably just be township cleanup expense-
Yeah, okay.
Because we don't know if it's, you know-
Very harmful.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we change the, um, make a note, change the description on that account, that four twenty-seven dot three fifty seven?
Yeah, I- I could take care of that.
And just make it township.
Township cleanup expense, and so, keep twenty thousand in there.
And again, there's, there was, uh, funds that were, um, made, if you will, accumulated because of that.
Right.
Yeah, I think we- we did, because I had- I had mentioned that Julia did some work with, uh, with the road crew, with Eddie.
Cleanup cleanup receipt, we only make about four thousand on it and you expense money?
Right, yeah, that was what I deposited from, uh, the cleanup.
So, that one should be changed, township cleanup receipt, um, three sixty-four dot nine nine zero, he said spring will change that to township. You only get a fraction of what you actually have to pay.
Actually, it's a better fraction than it was, that Julia, it's, it worked to, uh, work on the fees we charged and get them back into the-
Yeah, this is the first year we charged, um-
No, we charge all the time, but we increased the charges, I believe.
Oh, no, everybody got charged in our this year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the first time we did that.
Okay, all right, so, um, what's it?
So, I'll change that to just say township cleanup receipt?
Right, it probably won't be as bad, cause we- we expect next year that- that, uh, other people, uh, may bid that are not necessarily, you know, as large as waste management, so.
So, should you change the number on that?
Oh, no.
Three sixty-four, nine ninety?
No, that's gonna stay the same, I'll say four thousand.
At the four thousand, okay.
That's an, that's actually-
And the expenses will be twenty thousand.
Right.
And that brings us to gas, on four thirty dot two thirty-one, highway gas.
Highway gas, fascinating, because it, there was a time when we had supplied, uh, gas and then also, uh, I- I believe we did use, uh, some- some monies for the, at least the Shawnee Fire Company. And I don't know if that's, that's excluded in there, that, maybe it's under diesel, because they're- they're pretty much all diesel now.
Yeah, I guess that would just relate if you have a gas truck, right?
This, well, this gas, um-
Yeah, we have a couple of gas.
This gas here can be for like their small, uh, equipment, over at the shop, um, that they need gas for.
Well, if it's highway, I would think that's-
Well, uh, two thousand and- and in reality, two seventy-six today, I-
I think five hundred dollars, if I could do that.
That'd be more than enough.
Yeah.
Mhm. And then, only diesel fuel, looking like it's annualizing about fifteen thousand, we budgeted twenty. Prices were down a little bit this year for diesel, a little bit at twenty.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Well, full deminer equipment.
And that would be stuff that, um, is over at the shop, uh, that also could be, if we did anything, I don't know, can you click on that, what's that? I'm pretty sure it's gonna be stuff that Eddie has used.
It's, it's small too, that band saws, saws, drills, torches.
Over at the shop.
Lifts, anything that they feel that they need to replace or, of course, those guys fix everything, so that's why it's very low.
Yeah, I mean, a fire that's just been gone, it looks like it's gonna be reasonable.
For, that's for them, uh, yeah.
Small tool and boiler with gas.
Okay, cheers.
Five hundred, six, six hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred's down fine.
I'm waiting on.
I was getting overly optimistic, cause I thought we were.
Oh, no. There's more fun to be had.
This is, yeah, three more pages, uh.
Okay, then.
Okay, but now. The general fund, uh.
So four thirty dot two forty.
What do we do for four thirty two thirty nine?
General expense highway.
I thought that was acceptable.
That looks like two thousand, I am not sure.
Hmm, yeah, alright, let me.
Okay, one call system monthly fee, uh, and now we are engaged in a new program where we actually do pay it, and I think that's, that, that's a finite cost. I would guess that it's not gonna go up in twenty twenty one. Um, I don't know, two hundred, maybe?
Hmm, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
With an increase in construction, it'll probably be that.
And then here we go, shop materials and supplies. Was that line item with?
Well, fifteen, anywhere between fifteen hundred and twenty five hundred. Do you suppose it's different?
Five hundred, eight hundred, that's fifteen hundred.
Some vehicle operating expenses.
That's a big, that's a big line item.
Yeah, what's that, that historic week?
I don't know.
Um, back in twenty seventeen, it was less than a hundred dollars. Twenty eighteen, it was twenty five hundred. And twenty nineteen, it was forty five hundred.
Okay, that's.
So, wh- for what? So, it, it was, how much, the, the last, uh, eighteen and nineteen were significantly more, huh?
Yeah, I'm guessing they might have done a major repair before.
Yeah, there were a couple, they did have to take.
Lynn, on this next one, uh, we upgraded our communications for the road crew.
That's the radios in the truck?
Yep.
And that's pretty consistent, everyone, that, that they're like two hundred and sixteen dollars every month, and that hasn't changed in years.
So we're good with twenty five hundred?
PNS garage is, are, are the baby expenditures twenty nineteen?
What was?
PNS garage, the, what's that?
Well, that's repair, yeah, that's truck repair.
So maybe put it at two? If that's what it'll, you know, annualize to this year theoretically?
Okay, two thousand is good. I mean, you can't.
It moves so much, it's, it's.
You can't guess what's happening.
Yeah. Um, like I said, the radio communications for the trucks, the next line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's two hundred and sixteen dollars a month. It's been that forever.
Are we talking, uh, uh, road employee mi- mileage?
No, I. No, the four thirty, three twenty seven, the one you and I just talked about, the radios in the truck.
Right, that, we, we're gonna leave it as it is, it's.
Yeah, that's been consistently twenty five hundred for the past four years.
Right. Okay, expenses, uh, uh, we bought a new vehicle for our roadmaster who used his own vehicle, and he charged, of course, mileage when he was on another job, so. None of the other people on, on the, we're talking road crew here, are gonna be charged. That, that could be close to.
Well, now, this needs to be changed, actually, to not say road employee, because that used to be headline item for the truck.
Right, this is, uh, yeah.
This is, this is Joe, uh, going to the park, his mileage.
Well, then it's gotta be changed.
So, road needs to come off of that, and I, I can do that.
Alright.
Well, well, maybe since you're collapsing with today's work session, you're collapsing the, uh, the park funding, the general fund. You know, shouldn't Joe Luise's, uh.
But this is also mileage, just, uh, Lois goes to the post office.
Oh, so maybe it should just be employ- employee then?
Employee mileage expense.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll take the word road out.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
On that account.
So, and, and again, typically, uh, Jacob, if, if we did have the, uh, the event down at Hershey that's been canceled.
Right, it was still under that category.
Where you would be allowed your mileage back and forth in that.
Right.
I think between a thousand and sixteen hundred is gonna be a good number for that.
Well, I'm trying to, yeah, I, and I'm taking a look historically at, um, I don't know. I, I know we all do a lot of travel, but I don't see too much of it coming through on travel sheets, you know?
Right.
And you're, you're.
Yeah.
Been doing a lot of stuff, and I know.
So with COVID and everything, and now everything goes virtual, let's keep it at a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I, I'm doubtful that, cause I got to save the date for P S, I'm doubtful that'll happen in person.
Hmm.
Not going to. No, I mean, you know, we can have all this fun where we say, oh, you know, limits are different, but cases are still going up, you know, there's no reason to expect to have anything.
Right, I'll just change it to rate employee mileage expense, and we're putting a thousand there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Capital, uh, uh, capital purchases.
Uh, okay, so for capital purchases, Ed has asked for fifty two thousand dollars, um, so they're interested in buying a, uh, used paver to replace our old and ailing ones, and they're interested in, I'll pay you for, uh, capital.
And so, I think when I talked to Ed, he had said, maybe he said, he did on his note when he gave it to, I believe, to you, and you got it out to us.
And I thought, yeah, so fifty two thousand, is that approved?
I, here's what I'd like to say on that. Well, number one, it's gonna be a minimum forty to fifty thousand dollars to buy a good paver. Brand new, two hundred and twenty thousand. So, I mean, if he gets to buy one, uh, we can, uh, we're not, we should approve that, that, that purchase not to, for the paver, not to exceed fifty thousand. And the trailer, I forget what the hell he had, fifteen or something?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
So I think you were saying forty as well, right?
Yeah, it's a two.
One to fifty two.
And I'm saying it should be.
You want fifty and twelve, and it comes with sixty two?
We need our own. We've been using Middle Smithfield's equipment. Yeah, we, we definitely need our own.
Yeah, and the reason we need our own is, uh, uh, Middle Smithfield Township has a Jagundo operation, and then, and then, and rural, more rural Smithfield Township, we need the, the right size. To get in, uh, Green Mountain Road, for example. We did that, and, and it worked well, so.
So fifty two thousand on travel purchases?
I thought it was fifty two.
Yeah, it was fifty two, but then, um, Brian was.
I, I think that.
I, you wanna give Eddie, uh, uh, the leeway to go out, he's already looking around, but he's not gonna do any travel, he's not gonna make any commitments until we commit to, to a money. So I just said, uh, no more than fifty thou, or forty five thou, we can say, and no more than, what was, thir- thirteen, twelve hundred?
Twelve thousand.
So fifty seven thou.
Alright, fifty seven.
It makes his life a lot easier, but we have to do that at a public main, I guess, uh.
Well, once he finds something, and we have our.
Right, it, it, what, no, he, what he really wants is not to spin his wheels until we approve it. Say, alright, here's the deal, you've got fifty thousand dollars, no more than, or forty five, then he gets his rear end out there and he does all, he does his work. But it, it, but it's silly to go, and put him out there now until we, we've committed to it. It's a simple thing, we can do it at a work session, we put it on the agenda.
Alright, but the reason that it's at that forty is because he found a paver that he would like to purchase.
Uh, he did and he didn't. Hey, again, I've talked to him about it. He said that, there's a paver, and, and he doesn't even know it's available anymore. But he did find one, I think he said it was about forty thousand, possibly forty two, and, uh, but, but he said he would love to have the opportunity to look a little, maybe a little bit further, maybe get a little bit more.
So then we'll leave it at fifty seven and then move on.
You betcha. And we, now, but, but Julia, we gotta get that on a work session, agenda, to approve.
Okay, fifty seven thousand for that number?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's important.
And then the next one, it's odd that the snow and ice removal was budgeted for zero, but you, that's truly the expenditures in this capacity.
Well, in, in that case, that's January through September, it's not showing it.
Yeah, so, I mean, like, uh, in December of twenty nineteen, we did have the snow.
Oh, alright, I see what you're saying there, okay.
So I would say, let's leave it at ten thousand.
So that, that is, um, in, in that instance, it's like we've run out of liquid fuels money, and we don't get liquid fuels money till March first, and so you have to pay out of general fund for snow and ice, um, expenses.
It's gotta be reflected somewhere as an expense, right?
I would say twenty thousand for now, because that's what you expended in the last quarter of last year.
Right.
Although, you know.
Yeah, maybe there'll be no snow this year, again, November, December.
So let's make it nothing. Let's make it zero.
I know, it's only with the. Is there any fish pier drain expense, I think? You said that was gonna be zero on the income, so it's gonna be zero on the expense?
Yeah.
And Green Light Go, I know was on, on hold. Is that gonna be zero?
For, I, that's a good question. As I said earlier, the last meeting, Green Light Go is on hold, but it's not been completely done away with.
Well, we left zero up on the income side.
Right, cause decided we didn't wanna count it, count on it either way.
Well, then zero.
Yeah, so it's whether on the expense side of it, and so we know.
Yeah, because if we have zero on the, on the income side, and five hundred thousand, yeah, there we go.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're done.
Okay, street signs expense? That's, uh, reliable sign.
Street signs, so are these, um, these like, uh, who, what, are they actual street signs, like speed limit signs?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't include when, when Penn puts together people's, uh, nine one one.
Yeah, no, this is literally a street sign.
That's a question, yeah, that's, uh, it's salary.
A weight limit sign.
Well, weight limit signs, uh, one-way signs, the, the whole works.
The actual has been, we're taking closer to two thousand, so I, I would put that at two thousand.
You know, that's fine, except I, I travel around this township, I, but I don't see where any new signs have been going on.
Who would think of buying, uh, one of those, uh, signs that tells your speed?
Well, you have that in, in the brand.
What brand? Oh, not brand.
The P P E, or the P P E. Have they asked for that?
I don't think.
The one that flashes your speed limit?
What brand are you talking about, though?
Windup, we just got the.
Yeah, it's gonna look up price, so. I don't know what they call.
Well, let's say this street signs at two thousand, if we do buy that equipment, it would probably go up in, closer up in capital purchases?
Yeah. I'm not gonna take that.
That's no traffic signal electric expense.
And again, that is normally paid out of the highway fund, um, but again, if we depleted in twenty nineteen, the liquid fuels, highway money and stuff, um, then general fund had to pick up the expense of that.
Well, we need a thousand, because that's the thing last year, so.
Right.
Traffic signal repairs, I think it's gonna be up in the air, fifteen hundred to three thousand.
Fifteen hundred, ten, what, what is it then? Well, there.
So, twenty seventeen, it was four thousand, twenty eighteen, it was three thousand, twenty nineteen, it was twenty five hundred.
Yeah, and that does, does that conclude damage to the, so the insurance coverage can kick in, uh, plan due?
Um.
I don't know.
Of course, we, we hired this consulting firm, this company, that does their work, actually, the ones that are working with this, on Green Light Go. Here's another thing, Green Light Go, if it does kick in in twenty twenty one. We've got, once, and once they do that, they, Pendot insists that the municipality takes over.
Any of them, all that.
Right, so we have that, um.
I don't think we're gonna see that.
Uh, twenty one.
So we're gonna have repairs, so.
So maybe keep it at three, if it's been so, you know, if it's here, it's just historically low.
And I think that we can leave traffic signal other at zero, because I think that's probably something that's just.
Right.
And then that brings us to annual maintenance, repair, that's been zero, if we go to zero. Repair of tools and machinery, I think it's ten thousand, but we're only at about three now, you expected five last year to come to an annualized number of eight.
And that is probably, um, Sharon, could you click on that, four thirty seven, three seventy four? I'm thinking it's, uh, PNS invoices?
Should I agree pairs?
No, um, the hair of tools and machinery.
Yes, PNS does that as well, if you're.
The repairs of tools and machinery, and any repairs that's on our trucks. And in this case.
I think it was tires.
Yeah, well.
Is it PNS, or is it?
Service.
Service Tire Truck Center?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, again, normally, um, some of that would have been paid out of liquid fuels, but has to be paid when we run out at the end of the year. So, ten's gonna have a high value.
Oh, eight is going to annualize, so eight thousand?
Two thousand, I, I think would.
Eight thousand, six months?
Yeah.
Not your real maintenance, this, this.
That could be, that could be a line, and, and then, I don't know, um, did you click on that one?
Oh, that's some pretty large numbers. Oh, the repair, repair of traffic gap room. You got something that, again, in the fourth year, you might end up.
Right, when we run out of the liquid fuels money, we tap in on the general fund side, right?
Well, we blessed it at zero last year, and we came to about twenty four hundred at the annualized, up here, and what we're expecting so far.
Think a thousand?
Four, a thousand in that.
Yeah.
Thousand?
Our concept is bridges construction zero, right? And you guys can't put in any more bridges?
Uh, most likely not, most likely not. We just won't do it this year. Till twenty one, well, not, twenty twenty one, we're gonna have to take a long hard look at that. We have two bridges, to repair them both, it'd cost a half a million dollars. And, and we own them. And what happens, as you know, is, is, is that, I'm just gonna talk to Jacob comes back, is, is that, uh, they hire a, a consulting engineering firm, Pendot, and they go out and, uh, and they're paid. They do it quarterly, they make a lot of money. It's, it's just part of how they make money. And they inspected the bridges, and then they give us a, a, a kind of a, initially a terse report, but then they follow it up with more, more detail. And, uh, what they're saying is, very simply, is, we have one instance, we have a situation in Green Mountain Road, that that bridge is deteriorating, uh, and we're looking to get an easement to get in there, so we can offer emergency services. We're, we're not going anywhere near getting it done. We may have to in twenty twenty one, do repairs that would bring it up to a, uh, at, at least a weight limit that would allow fire trucks, uh, oil trucks, ambulances to go over that bridge. So I don't know what to say about that. It's a guesstimate, and I don't know.
Is there something you'd be able to get a grant for?
Well, that, that's a good point, and, uh, initially talked to a couple of people about it. We, we reached out last year, like, early last year. And, uh, yeah, I, I, I would hope that we could get a grant for it.
So, um, it's been zero in the past, um, it sounds like we've got something maybe brewing, um, do you wanna do with that one?
Or attention for, for its construction?
What do we do for the one about that?
Zero.
Yeah, and, and, um, toll brid- toll roads and bridges construction.
Thousand.
It's gonna be for, pretty much, uh, bridge, and I, I hate like how the plug, can we leave that blank, and I'll talk to Eddie, because he's got the statistics on it. I think he just shared it with, uh, with all three of us, but, uh, I'd, I'd like to have a more definitive answer.
Okay, so we'll leave that one, grant for it up. Or restoration.
That's like, um, like a fire hydrant fee that we pay every year.
It looks like it's closer to eight hundred dollars.
Right.
It's like something like eight hundred dollars.
Okay, so eight hundred?
Yeah.
Air and water is knocking on our door too. They think they, they want to put some more in, but I, I'm sure it's not a twenty twenty one item on their agenda.
So the he's seen our grant, uh, for fishing spear and support, those are gonna be from zero for twenty twenty one.
Right.
The arts council.
Favorite contribution, um, the township makes.
Do you have one to do?
It is, it is, I guess.
Five hundred?
Where, where, where do they get to?
The arts council.
All right, where are you at? What line?
Four fifty three.
Five two zero.
Five two zero.
Four fifty?
We're five three dot five.
Oh, four fifty three. Okay, the five, five hundred, uh, yeah. I don't, how do you feel?
Uh, that's fine.
Marshall's Falls, um.
Beginning of next page.
Well, we can reset it.
So we probably did that in the income, because I think we do expect for that.
We wrote that on four fifty four, three hundred. First page, the last line. I mean, seven, page seven, sorry.
Right, and if we.
Oh, all right.
If we do that, because somewhere in the, uh.
Okay, three fifty four point zero seven one.
Yeah, right. Six.
And the match is zero, regional park expense.
Right, three fifty four, zero, seven, one, honey.
Right.
So four five four dot five twenty, regional park expense, and the last year fourteen hundred.
If we share that with, uh, Nelson and Phil Township.
One thing I don't find anywhere here is the park improvements budget. We've always just transferred from the general fund, but we, we, do we have any park improvements budget for it?
Well, we'd have to be on the park fund.
Well, we'll get to that. We'll be there.
That's in the park funds.
Right, but we're collapsing that into this.
Park fund is, all the accounts from the park fund are gonna come into the general fund for twenty twenty one. And when we get on the park fund budget, that really is gonna get incorporated into this general fund budget.
So.
But is that, is that related to the regional park expense?
No, regional park is, is, um, between Middle Smithfield Township and, uh, any expenses.
Yeah, we kept that one that F that.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, there was a Middle Smithfield in two thousand and nineteen expenditure, it was about eighteen hundred, everything else was a little. That's something you share, um, I'd say fifteen hundred, just to be close to what's.
What it, yeah.
Twenty nineteen.
And what line item, please?
Four five four dot five twenty, regional park.
And where do you wanna keep it at? Because a lot of the stuff we do together is in time.
Does, as you know, they cut the grass down there, and we.
Okay, so everything here below up to the Marshall's Falls LSA grant, all are zeros. Is there any reason why any of that would change? We don't have Nevo, Mount Nevo, any of that. The rules will all say zero.
Yeah.
And then we have a LSA grant and the match in there.
And that's two nineteen.
Two hundred and nineteen thousand, forty six thousand.
Yep, the match.
Monroe County vector control has been zero, and the castle we got zero.
Uh.
Is the donation then?
Yeah, it is. That's a good point. Now, we haven't received anything from the county, uh, yet. What happened is they, they put the, uh, vector control, people, with the Monroe County Planning Commission, and, uh, they asked, uh, in their wisdom, that if you had any instances of whatever, and you were identified as it, then you would pay, and you would pay more, but if, for instance, the Barret Township didn't have any kind of a infection or, or anything, it, uh, the nyl virus, nyl virus was at the time, and then the, I forgot the other one, but we did have instances, so they wanted to pay us, but that seems to have gone away. So I don't, we, we don't have any bill for it now. Yeah, I would, yeah.
And then the next are all donations, um, for Broadhead, Watershed, Kettle Creek, Monroe County, Open Heritage, Awesome, Pike County, Can't Cap Alone, Open Wild Life, first two things, and then it's like Berry Valley.
Yeah, I, um, and we started with, uh, thousand, 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 two thousand for Awesome, Pike County Main Society. We did that for the first year, because they, they have a presence here, uh, twelve nine. Campetillion, uh, privately run. I think Campetillion and Awesome should be the same. Either, uh, Awesome comes down to twelve, twelve fifty, if we, if we wanna do that.
Yeah, I'd rather keep it the same, certainly not increase them, but I wouldn't cut them at the moment either.
You, you meant, yeah. Okay.
Which one do you want?
Just talking about all the contributions.
Who's that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And it's, you know, I mean, the charities have been hard hit through COVID, through, you know, the new tax laws, um, so I think it sounds like it's able, it's like expensive.
So, okay.
Yeah, I, I like to keep them the same.
So it's gonna be right down the board, thousand, thousand, a thousand?
Oh, you wanna make all of that?
Thirteen hundred.
Uh, well, no.
How did we wind up in thirteen hundred for Kettle Creek? We were a thousand.
I think we, we made an additional contribution at one point in the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm having.
Okay, so we're gonna keep it a thousand, or thousand?
Thousand. Two, two thousand, Awesome.
Leave, leave Awesome at two thousand?
Yeah. Yeah.
Two thousand for Awesome. Five hundred Pike County?
Yeah, as I say, uh, they, they are Pike County, but they have a presence over at the, um,
Okay. Campetillion, um, is that gonna go stay at twelve fifty, or do you want that up to two thousand?
I, I think twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty, and, and there's a reason for that.
And then the rest is left to a five hundred still?
Yeah, yeah, five hundred for them.
Um. The loan on the truck, that looks like that stays about the same, right? It, it's not getting picked off, is it?
I just made the last payment.
Okay, so twenty twenty one it'll be zero?
Right.
Oh, yippee, boo.
That's, that's a big one. Always nice.
And the loan interest, we can make that zero. And it looks like we can reach to page nine.
Page nine is, is the last page. Just make it all zeros and go on. Our company's workers' comp, all right, Lynn?
That should be state workers' insurance. And what we pay for, um, the fire company.
Do they look in the state about the same? We don't know what's happening.
I have no idea if that stays the same or not, um, it depends on if we've had any claims, um, and I don't think we did this, this year.
Our, our historic data.
But it usually goes back like a three-year period, and then it drops off.
Right.
And the last one, who was the last one we had on? Do you remember?
I don't.
Historically, twenty seventeen it was fifty three thousand, and twenty, fifty thousand, twenty nine, fifty four.
And, and, and twenty nineteen forty three, how about twenty twenty was what?
So far, it's only at something like that.
It, yeah, it's been a good year.
So anywhere between thirty seven thousand and forty five would be probably a good guess for now.
Thirty seven, I think.
I would still have to make three more.
Thirty, thirty seven?
Yeah, thirty seven.
Good, just thirty seven.
Other?
That would be township, former comp.
Say the township, right. That would be.
And your annualization came out close to twenty, and you did, you, you budgeted twenty two, so anywhere between twenty and twenty two.
So twenty is it?
Twenty sounds good.
Now, so. Well, let's say, um, that's, we went over the budget, talked to, uh, I guess we're talking to our, uh, broker, and that's Brown Brown, and they did come back to us, and they, they wanted another input from this line about the, um, umbrella coverage for the supervisors, and you did that report yesterday, or, but you know.
Okay, so this is the general liability for the property?
Yeah.
The building. Again, we don't know.
Well, annualized, it seems close to thirty seven, you budgeted forty two. And I think thirty seven, thirty eight thousand.
Insurance, in, in the conversations we've had, uh, with Brown and Brown, insurance has held its own, and, and in some instances, it's gone down a little bit. So I think, mentioned to.
Thirty seven?
Thirty seven. It just. Now, and the workers' comp, again, the workers' comp insurance, do we plug in a figure for that?
Uh, forty eight four, eight four dot zero 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 is twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And then the line below it is a subtotal, so.
Right.
Yeah, thirty seven.
All right, so it's, the twenty thousand is, okay. Uh.
Actives, cyber insurance?
Yeah, we got it.
Cyber insurance, so that's something that seems to fit the fourth quarter. You wanna do three and, uh, twelve hundred, three thousand and twelve hundred?
Yeah.
The activists, is it that much?
I think we guys got some sort of silver plan, I think.
Yeah, we, we came, that's under three thousand dollars.
We did? So that's a twenty nine. And the same for cyber insurance?
Yeah, that was twelve hundred.
So they've got twelve hundred.
Jacob, do we know what cyber insurance covers?
Yeah, that, that covers, uh, you know, tax, against the website, ransomware.
I mean, what exactly it, it covers under that, whatever.
It depends on what pro.
It's pretty cheap.
What premium you got, yeah. It's, 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 it's in there, we could pull it out and, and take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd like.
For that. Lynn, we just show Robert the.
Cyber insurance.
A dollar six?
Yeah.
So ten fifteen, somewhere in between there. I think ten thousand looks like about where you're at.
For?
The, uh, by, uh, public.
Public officials? Yeah, let's keep that.
Ten thousand?
Oh, yeah, don't, you gotta pay that.
Uh, hospital dental vision, do you guys have that memory yet, or?
Uh, you, I think, I think, I think, I think, didn't they send H and R from the, the union, mostly we're talking about?
Yeah, I had added up, um, I was around.
Yeah, it was part of your.
Two hundred and seventeen thousand.
And make it two twenty, just round it up, do yourself a buffer.
Yeah.
Two twenty?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Supplemental insurance, waiver.
Well, wait, hang on. I also have dental and vision coverage, um, thirty, thirty four twenty, that would be added into that line of hospital dental and vision.
Okay, we, it's two hundred seventeen.
That looks like it's coming up.
And then we add in another three. And then you. Okay.
So it seems two twenty is good? Do you wanna bump that up?
No.
Say, we have a note for the.
It's gross.
Oh, okay, sorry, I misheard you.
It makes sense, if we could get everybody for that.
Okay, and then disability, it's been zero in the past, we add it zero?
Right.
Um, supplemental insurance reimbursement?
Do we even need that line item?
What, disability insurance?
Benefit, disability insurance benefit.
It sounds like you don't provide it.
And there's a reason for that. Uh, we'll have to look into it, leave it zero.
Supplemental insurance reimbursement?
Right, that's, we're gonna end at like two thousand and fifty two dollars at the end of this year, and I don't know if that's being increased. Usually, um, historically has gone up a little bit.
Maybe twenty two hundred?
Twenty two hundred, yeah. It looks like uniform service around six thousand, two hundred is a good number.
Depth C service has, do they do it monthly, Lynn?
Yeah.
So that's consistent. What do you think?
Thousand and sixty seven hundred.
I said six thousand.
Um, uniform transfer, we leave that at zero. Transfer to parks, we're not gonna worry about, because that's gonna ultimately get moved in here.
Right, so we've just put zero there?
Yeah, we will actually roll in the expenses, the line items that came to park fund once we get to that point.
So in the next edition of the worksheet, that'll be on that, then?
Right, the transfers will be zero.
Okay.
And then highway fund, eighty four thousand, what you ended up putting in a hundred last year, so it was about twenty fifty?
Yeah, last year we put in a hundred, because we had a major paving program, so we did a hundred, but I don't think that, I think our liquid fuels is gonna, we, we already had our major, um, paving project in Totscap Road, and that's complete, and our liquid funds, I think, covered it, Lynn, didn't they?
Um, I should have looked at the balance of what the highway fund was before it came in here, um, because again, when we get to the end of the liquid fuels money, we have to start paying. Now, last year Mike had suggested, instead of paying from general fund, transfer the money from general fund into highway, so that we're just looking at one, not looking at, uh, the general fund and the highway fund with similar expenses, that it's all in highway.
And Lynn, and, and then by doing that, we're reflecting that, in fact, yes, to the residents of Smithfield Township, uh, this is money that is, if we take it out of the general fund, it's not, it's gonna be a, you know, just a transfer, it's not gonna be obvious to anyone. But if it's reflected in, in this particular item here, uh, for the, for the highway itself, so if we put it in there and augment the funding for the highway fund, I think it would be more obvious to the public, because there, a lot of things are going with that.
Have we then considered leaving this blank until we have the opportunity to review the highway budget next week?
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think we're gonna have to. If I could see what, um, we're at after this paving project, because I just paid a Eureka bill.
Right, yeah.
Last week, um, if I see where we're at. Well, to, to jump ahead, um, into the highway fund, we're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars income, um, and we're going to need to transfer. If we do everything that Ed has asked for, about two hundred and fifty thousand in the highway fund to get what we want.
Well. Does that include the Totscap? Are you mean for twenty twenty one?
For twenty twenty? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, for everything.
Yeah, because that, we got a, we got a decision, we have to talk about paving River Road, not make, into the park service may not be.
Right, so then maybe we'll just leave this empty until we have the opportunity to review the highway budget, so we're not guessing to go back to look, yeah.
Yeah. And we can look at alternative projects.
Exactly.
Cause I mean, that, that one, yeah.
Okay, and then, so it looks like the rest of these on this page are zeros.
Let's put a question mark there.
And then I think there's a gas on our back here that's just, maybe you get it.
Pretty close, but, yeah, in the forest.
Do you have something in where the rental was downstairs?
Oh, not yet.
That's right, yeah.
We'll know that before the end of the month.
He's, yeah, we need the mental income, but I was afraid you'd get the fifteen expenses, but it looks like we are actually in good shape.
And we're going to, it's, another thing is that we are going to be spending money, as Jacob said, it's not gonna be cheap cheap. it's not gonna be cheap, uh, to, to make reservations so, so that we can have the judge as a client, as a, as a renter.
Well, uh.
Well, yeah, let's see.
I think so. It's up to the private fund.
I gotta get back to the office.
Right. But we have a lot that we can balance and, and figure out for, for the next thing.
Well, and then again, how do you do the same as you're done, so, you know, that's.
Absolutely.
So then we're gonna be a pretty good idea for what we need, and how much, uh, the, the, the transfer of funds is gonna be in that situation.
Yeah, right now, we're only down twenty five, that's not awful.
What'd you say?
Right now, we're only down twenty five thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, all right.
Don't get excited, we haven't talked about the highway fund yet, so we're.
Right, and I know that we have to look at, you know, what is salaries again before we're done.
Right.
But, either way, it's much better than where other expectations might have been, which means.
I think it's gonna end up more than that.
The duck line is, yeah, December.
Maybe, but at least we can say, 'cause there's probably some stuff that we still have to trim yet in here, but I guess we can say that we've spent, you know, fiscally responsible as a township and are not, you know, not blowing away money, the way, I know, not, not to bash other municipalities, but I know some of our, you know, counterparts are down several hundred thousand this year, and we are not, so.
Wonder why, who's down so much?
I'll talk to you later, yeah.
Off the record.
Off the record.
Um, so it sounds like we can polish up the general fund next time, we need to work on, um, park and rec and the highway, um, and I think, uh, I'm working on next time, I'm not here, so.
Park and rec, we should, uh, we should be okay with that to get through that, and then highway fund.
I mean, Julie, does it make sense, 'cause you have a lot of the numbers already, um, and the other option would be to populate some of it, and then just go through, like, see if it makes sense.
Yeah, and then, you know, I've, um, gone through these parking lot and highway fund already, and functioned decent numbers, we can share that when we have a speed start with, rather than reading it.
That'd be great.
Did you share that yet with us?
No, no, we haven't talked about the park and rec fund yet, I haven't shared that, but I can send you along and spin out.
Yeah, I was thinking, we could email that to everyone, and then I, I can, I have an opportunity to take a look at it, and I think we will, and whatever I see, generally, I mean.
Sounds great.
And much better humor now than when I got here.
Yeah.
Oh, I hate driving sometimes.
Yeah.
So then, it, well, okay, same time, same time and place, next week, but then we're gonna change the last one, if we even need it.
As usual.
As usual.
Yeah.
I never get to the last one, usually.
No, I hope we don't, so what we really gotta do then is, like, take a look at it, um, and just, uh, see as it is right now, and, and just, even if we just take a guesstimate at a couple of other things, and not plug it in, but we do it and, 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 and come up with a, it's a very good idea of where we are, and what, how much money we're gonna have to move to balance the budget.
Right.
And, uh.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this one, it's twelve twenty eight then.
I can do.